Be happy to answer any questions.
And this, this is a waiver that everyone signs. It's not something that's special to the schools.
Correct.
Anytime you go to a call, say the high rise, somebody falls out of their chair, we, we help them up. They sign this waiver saying they do not need required treatment, they do not want to be transported. That's it.
Yep.
So it's, it's formed at every, everyone signs. Now if you transport it, there's different form, but it is not an unusual form that we have just for the schools.
Yep. That, that form is filled out for every patient contact where we do not provide the full scope of our services.
You used a Latin term early on.
Sure.
Which is?
Locoparentis.
Locoparentis. That is the parent, the school is the parent in that situation.
Correct, yes. As they are any other school day from the time the kids leave the door until they arrive back home.
Correct. So we're asking the school just to take that custody, that authority and responsibility for the student back by signing that form and that it's okay for them not to go to the hospital. We're not asking them to say there's no medical injuries, that's not on the school to make that determination, that's our, our responsibility. And we're asking that if something does come up that they'll call 911 or take this student to the hospital, just like any other patient. So by the school district refusing to sign that form, we, we can't turn the student in over to the school again because they're basically saying we, we're not taking custody of the child back, so.
Yeah, and in my conversations with the representative, their attorney who's in Independence, Missouri, told them that under no circumstances should they sign that form. And, and then we were told, well, when they are on the bus, the, the student transportation is responsible for them. I said, good, they can sign it.
That's fine.
No, their attorney has also advised student transportation not to sign this waiver. So it's kind of like, okay, we've got 19 juveniles who are on this bus and we're just supposed to leave them there, well then we're, we're still liable, so.
One other point that I want to make is there was some concern that this was a new policy or development on behalf of our agency. I did reach out to Chief Mike Schertz who, who ran the organization starting in 2009 through the mid 2015, 2016, something like that. He stated that this was a standard practice anytime that they had an incident involving the, the school district and school district representatives in the past have responded and signed the form. So this is not a new thing, this is not an EMS thing, this is, this is state law. One of the unfortunate issues that, that we will run into and that I want to make abundantly clear is that this will potentially create some frustration or concerns from the parents. And from, from our perspective, our agency is acting within what is dictated to us under our guidelines and state law. And we will always act in the child's best interest and transport those patients and make sure that they are safe. And any of those concerns or talking points, we would encourage them to have those conversations with the school district.
I think you answered this question before I ever asked it, which is what's the experience with other school districts? And so you've given an example of that, right?
Yeah, and I've, I've responded personally or been the recipient of several bus crashes. And the schools have always jumped in, taken responsibility for the kids, coordinated with the parents, had no issue taking that responsibility back. This is the first time I've ever heard of this in central Missouri at least, or, or other areas of the school saying, no, we refuse to take the responsibility for the child back, so.
But you have a solution in a sense, it's not a good one.
It's a, it's a bad solution, but yes, we have a solution.
It, it is a solution that will create operational stress, you know, 19 students transporting them safely to the hospital. It will create downstream, you know, inefficiencies in the healthcare system as well. We understand that that is not the best solution, but given the circumstances, it is the only solution that we can come up with that will safely ensure the continued monitoring of those students.
If you're a parent and you get a call and you say your child who you assumed is safe at school or on the bus is at the emergency room, you're going to have some parents who are going to really panic. So, I mean, it's, yeah, it's kind of, kind of.
So what exactly are we doing today?
I think it's just clarifying what our operational procedures are going to be moving forward. I don't think there was any need for-
So I just wanted to make a public knowledge of what's going on.
Yes, and, and the reas-
We've talked about it, I mean, we, our hands are tied, we have a couple of options, the only way to do it, we have our policy and procedure and state statute to deal with, so, okay.
And the reason why we felt it necessary to bring it up i- in open session is because there were conversations directly with the commission about our operations and we felt it necessary to answer them.
Well, I'd offered to make a, set up a meeting with, with Brian McCross, superintendent, and I was told by, by the staffer that he would arrange the meeting. I had yet to hear of any meeting that they want to have with us, so.
Well, I think that's my point, is that we need to sit down with them at some point, face to face, and I thought they were going to be here. So I was kind of shocked that somebody's not here and we can't talk to them face to face. So I hope they don't take this as a slap in the face. This is the way it's going to be though.
Yeah. There have been multiple attempts, there was a position letter sent to the superintendent advising him of the meeting today. I believe Commissioner Bushman attempted to make numerous attempts to set a meeting and none of those have been returned.
Okay, because I would have rathered them been here, been in the middle of the thing, so if they wouldn't have been here and couldn't make it, we could have rescheduled it.
Yep. Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jim.
Okay. Next agenda item is discussion of shortage of employees in the maintenance department. I think we're down two. Good morning.
Good morning.
Got one on, on MFLA. He has decided, if I'm correct, he's going to come back when he's able, work two weeks and leave.
He notified me that he has not yet been released from care to return to work, so I'm still waiting for any additional documentation. The only thing I have right now is that he is not released from work. However, when he spoke with Debbie, I think he gave conflicting information. So as far as the F M L A goes, he is still on off work status.
Okay. I've got another employee that hurt himself not on the job, but off the job, hurt his shoulder, so he's probably going to go on MFLA. I don't know if he's brought you the paperwork yet or not.
I've gotten his request for F M L A, we've not gotten any further than that, his next appointment is coming up next week, I believe.
Okay, and then over sheriff's department, sheriff has lost the helper for Jordy over there, so basically we're three people short. We're running around like our chickens with their heads cut off, trying to keep up with everything. I'm open for suggestions, what you'd like to do. Starting wage is $15 an hour, which we're not going to find anybody, especially when everybody else is paying more than that. I know it's been talked about maybe hiring a janitorial service, I'm all for it. We can rearrange the maintenance staff's hours, instead of coming in at five, we come in at seven, which we cover longer in our buildings instead of us leaving at two. Since we've had this shortage of staff, I've been staying until 3:30, four o'clock, just to make sure we don't have any problems in our other buildings. I'm open for suggestions. I've talked to temp service, they don't have anybody for that, for $17 to start, which we pay them over $25 an hour. They said we'd have to be closer to 20 to $21 an hour.
So they don't have anybody, or they didn't have anybody at what she said, $17 an hour?
They don't have anybody at $17 an hour.
I, I didn't know we put a price range on there. I just wanted to know if they had anybody available and at what price it would be, because we've decided what we want to do there. There's a lot of things to take into consideration on the temp service, we're not paying the benefits and insurance and such, so.
But our $17 an hour, we're paying the employee, that, that employee from that temp service, we're paying them $25 an hour, so.
And they're also limited as to the work that they-
Limited to what they can do, they can't work on ladders, they can't run power equipment, so.
Okay, I guess I will talk to them then, because I never was brought this information. That's what I was asking, is to go check with them, see if they have, see what we can do. How, how did you get the information?
I brought it to you too.
Oh, you did not. I, this first I've heard of.
I thought I brought it to you.
I heard from Jordy a couple of weeks ago and I said, let's look at temp service.
Well-
Because we're in a bad spot, we've got two people out, one injury possibly going to retire, may not come back at all, we're end up filling that position anyway, but we don't have a whole lot of options, so.
I thought you said you talked to Debbie when I was in there on that day talking to you about it, about temp service.
Well, yeah, I said, go check into it. But I never, anybody come to me and say, well, they can't do it because they can't, what, what are they operating? I mean, you can't push a trash cart?
They can't run a weedy, they can't run a mower, they can't run-
I'm fine with that, they can't push a trash cart and sweep stuff and do janitorial stuff.
Yes, they can do that.
That's what I'm talking about, is janitorial, I'm not talking about hiring a maintenance person, janitor.
Yeah, they probably could do that, yes. They can't do any ladders or nothing else.
So if you're going to share that information with Sam, it would probably be nice to share it with all of us, unless I know what's going on. That's the first I've heard of, I hadn't heard that they couldn't operate stuff, haven't heard a price on it, all of, I think the only thing to me was they didn't have anybody.
I thought I told you Jeff.
So, I mean, there's, it just, I don't care, at night, just sit down, do an email, then you know you sent it to me, you know what you told us, so. Okay, go ahead, you got, I know we're down people, so we got to figure some out.
So I'm open for your suggestions. If we want to go the janitorial route and we can move the maintenance people to, more coverage from seven to five or seven to three, that's great, it's whatever you guys would like to do.
So can I ask what happened, do I owe her a sheriff's part of the deed?
He went somewhere else.
He did, yeah. There's a lot of stuff out there right now, I mean, especially if they're interested in working, I mean, excavation alone, there's so much going on right now.
Yeah, he went for sheriff, if I'm correct, seven or eight thousand dollars more.
He went to J. Church, I see.
Yeah, I don't know what the issue is, I, you know, and we've, we've talked about, I know we're, we're doing janitorial service out of public works, and I don't know if we'd have, I don't know if anybody-
I thought we put it out once, but we got no, no response.
We did it for the health department and private and public works, and he only came back with a public works bid, and now we have someone doing the EMS bill.
I thought they're starting out, that's 15?
15, 30.
I can't find my spreadsheet, you have a little saved, it might be outdated. I would have been forward looking at doing outside services for the janitorial, so I'm, I'm fine looking at that avenue.
We could put out for them and see if, I know, you know, my wife works at the Capitol, they have janitorial services. It's, it's really strange, the Senate has their company that does their janitorial, the House has a different company that does their janitorial, and then OA has a third service that does theirs. It's like, why would you not just get one that would clean the whole Capitol, but, but.
If, if you went to a temp service today and said, what's your rate, and the rate apparently is $25?
That's what, it brought a 17, I, she asked what we would pay and I said it's around 17, because I wanted to keep it fair, and she said their rate would be 25 is what they would charge us.
Okay.
The temp service takes a cut of that rate, that doesn't mean the worker can't be paid that much.
No, I know that, the worker would be 17, they'd be paid 25.
They are not out, they are not county employees at that point. They are the temporary service companies employees.
Correct.
The temporary service company sends us a bill for $25 an hour.
Correct.
What they pay that person, we don't know, we don't care.
Right.
So why don't we go that route, saying, you know, if, if we had a $17 an hour employee, that person really costs us more like 135% of $17, is that fair to say, with insurance? Retirement, vacation, sick leave, whatever.
Yes.
So that's, that maybe is almost a wash.
It's about 20, probably.
Okay, so if that's a viable option, and of course they can only do janitorial, they can't do the ladders and weed eaters and lawn mowers, understood. That's something you'd have to manage with the staff that you do have. And is, Jeff, was that the direction you were headed?
Yeah, that's exactly where I was headed, that it's less headache for us too. Somebody comes in, we're not happy with them, we tell them, look, take them back, it's a lot easier to remove, replace.
My experience in the Capitol is you see different colored shirts, you know who works for who over there in the janitorial side of things. And I may, that's one of their ways to advertise as well, so I'd expect those folks to be, you could distinguish them here as well, because it's going to say Acme Temporary Service on the back with a phone number and a website probably, so. And that's, let's go that direction, see what happens.
So how much overtime have we been using?
Not hardly, I mean, here, they don't want to stay.
But they don't, they don't have, that's where I'm, I'm struggling. Last year, we made overtime available, it has not been used in the year. If, if we are having trouble keeping up, Greg, as the director, needs to mandate overtime. We also don't have the scheduled or the staggered late afternoon coverage at the courthouse anymore, did you all know that?
I'm here, I've been staying until 3:30, 4:00.
So you're doing the trash in the restrooms and everything?
I check them if they need it, yes.
The judges ask that we have somebody open to clean those things, so that at the end of the day, the restrooms are cleaned for the next morning.
We clean them in the morning too.
I think we're just missing a vote on some opportunities in-house. Overtime is going to cost us some, but overtime is not going to cost us the additional 35% on benefits. We're already paying those benefits, and if, if to, to cover our buildings and to do our job effectively, if we have to have short-term overtime, we mandate short-term overtime for coverage. Plain and simple, I can push a broom off clean meters.
So if you guys want to do like a temp service for three months with overtime mandated, needed or before, if you want to do overtime first and then the temp service. And then we actually bid out the cleaning services during this time and see what the cost is, and then maybe advertise too for positions that are open here. And see where we, where the direction, where we want to head after the three months. Do we want a temp service, do we want to do, you know, shorten our staff and then have a cleaning service for the remainder of our buildings? And you may think about increasing the wage as far as the low end wage for stuff.
Is that posted now, Sheila, do we have that?
I've not been told to post it, nor was I asked to post it.
Greg, I thought you said it was posted.
Which, sheriff's got his posted, I don't, because I didn't know, because I couldn't do anything while they're on MFLA. I can't replace them on MFLA, correct?
Correct.
So I can't post nothing.
You can, you can fill the position temporarily and let the person you know or that you have in that temporary position, that if your worker from, that's currently on F M L A returns, you'll have to do something different with them, perhaps let them go. A lot of people don't want that, but a lot of people do want some of it.
So if it's an area of Jordy to talk to me or what, I don't know why you didn't come talk to me yourself, but Jared and Jordy came up, we had a good conversation, I said,
When was this?
Let's look at temp service, I think we need to go ahead and advertise, because I don't think that one of them is going to come back, I think he's going to retire, if he doesn't, I'll deal with it then. We're, we're shorthanded, so we got to do something with it. And I said to talk to the other two commissioners, I don't know where that ended up at, you know, they started out on, on my end, and-
They never, Jeff, they never came to me, what, what you all talked about, okay?
So.
So.
Well, let's post, let's post.
Okay.
And then talk to the temp service and see if, if we can find anybody and if you need to.
I'd like to, I'd rather.
And then, and then in the meantime, as Debbie said, we would look at, at maybe bidding out a janitorial service.
And lawn care, I mean, I probably would like to get in on the lawn care part of it, everybody's probably booked up, got enough people, but maybe somebody's got some time. We can eliminate the positions, we have trouble skipping them field anyway. We could put, you know, some of the other stuff on your offices, shoulders, y'all can actually be maintenance, if you're two deputy directors, whatever your titles are exactly, but. I'd, I'd rather than do maintenance, actual maintenance, and when somebody's got a call and they- And when somebody's got a colony, got something that needs to be looked at, addressed, that gets taken care of. The janitorial stuff could be done, let somebody else do it. Grass cutting, bid it up.
I think we got bids on grass cutting quite a while ago, and it was so exorbitant, it's...
It was more exorbitant than hiring three more people?
No, that's usually the people we got.
'Cause that's what you have to have during the summer, you gotta have three people to do it during the summer to keep up with it. And equipment, and place a store, maintenance. What was the bid for that? Jessica, you remember?
I don't remember. I can look and email you guys.
I didn't think it was that bad. I'd, I'd like to look into that again. Can you find out what it was, and we can look at it and see if we wanna do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, does he have, have, or we have direction to go to a temp service now and do mandate overtime? If, if they need to?
Yes.
I think we have left to mandate overtime, too.
There are five people still in that.
Okay.
I mean, five counting you.
Yeah.
And if you would post that position?
I will. And getting our AP ready? Okay.
All right, call, call CNS before we leave.
Okay. Okay, signing of quotes from NAPID and Henderson for public works equipment for three trucks.
Hey, Sam, before you pass on to something else, I have an issue I'd like to mention with maintenance. And I sure hate to bring it up after hearing how shorthanded they are, but I have a diagram. We had a big flood in the recorder's office. But my issue is, one, I need to be informed what's going on. My understanding is water ran from one o'clock Sunday afternoon that I know of until Monday morning. So the issue is, when these repairs, I had to call somebody I know to come and give me an assessment, because until Jared showed up to give me some help, and by the way, he worked from about eight forty-five till one o'clock yesterday, helping with all of this, the whole office was flooded. Not just a little water, a lot, but I have a diagram here, and it is not just from the echo water unit. It is from a valve, this hot water valve that was replaced maybe eight months ago. So, we need to get this fixed with, I think, mechanical grade material. And I'm gonna pass this around, so you can take a look at it, 'cause that's the assessment that I came up with. And, I mean, my biggest concern, as you know, are those books, humidity, and we're still getting water cleaned up, it's a mess.
And we have nobody there to...
Well, hang on, that's, that's not true at all.
That's not, that's not entirely what happened.
So...
The valves in question were replaced this morning. Summit came in and replaced them.
We briefly got to talk about this before the meeting this morning, catch up a little bit on it. And there was contact made Sunday at some point that there was water on the floor, coming from somewhere. It was in the bathroom, I think that Mr. Corzmar had messaged somebody. And then it was told, "Okay, well, we'll take a look at it on Monday." So, we need to change that procedure, that protocol, if there's water, somebody's gotta come check it out. That, that should've been looked at, so...
Kirby and Darren rotate on call hours, but I don't know that anybody knows who's on call for the weekend. I, I don't know that it's distributed or posted or made available to any of the parts.
Do they know I've been holding me? I mean, if they can't get ahold of somebody with the maintenance, they can call me.
Sure.
I may not even be in town. I will get somebody in here somehow, some way, 'cause water can cause a lot of issues as far as finding...
I just don't know, did you all even know, Jordi, or Jordy, Darren, who was on call for the weekend?
Would've been me.
Yeah, well, usually when somebody calls one of us, if they're on call, we call one other, like, hey.
It doesn't matter who's on call, it's...
But were you notified that there was water?
No.
On Sunday?
Steve sent me a text saying, "Hey, there's water in the men's bathroom." He said, "Looked like it came from either from the toilet overflowing." I said, "Fine, we'll take a look at it Monday." That's the only thing I got. There was no water in any of the hallways at that time.
Okay. So, I, I still stand where I stand, I don't know if there's water on the floor. We don't wait till twenty-four hours later to check it out.
And that's why we have, we have one of you on call on weekends, so, yeah, we just need to...
If any, if anybody could just call one of us, we will communicate between, generally Jordy and I will communicate between each other, and we'll discuss who's on call and take care of it. It's, if, we just need one call.
Yeah.
I think that one call was made. It was text to Greg, so Greg should've come in and taken a look at it, just to make sure, either mitigate the damages, figure out if there's water spraying from somewhere, or if it's a drip, and it's just unlucky, and it'll all Monday. So, I think the call was made, it just did not get addressed properly, and we either change policy and procedure and make sure that there's water. I mean, if there's a little bit of smoke, I'm not gonna leave, I mean, I'm like, "Okay, I'll come back later and see if there's more smoke." Same with that. That water, a small leak can turn into something big in no time as well. And that may have happened, it may have been enough to put the puddle out there, and it still needs to be addressed, so...
So where I'm at, the entire office was flooded. This is not just a small leak, and apparently it ran all of that time. I'm not sure if the carpet's gonna need to be replaced or not. We're still drying it out. We have fans running everywhere, but it's still damp.
And I, I see where you're coming from, Judy, I agree with you a hundred percent. I don't agree with the way it was handled, that's why I'm saying it needs to change.
We get called in on weekends, water on the floor in the bathroom, like Steve called, we're not gonna check anywhere else. We're gonna clean the water up on the floor, and we're gonna leave.
If it's coming from underneath the wall from somewhere else, you're not gonna check anywhere else?
It wasn't, Steve said it was probably coming from the toilet. Friday, we had homeless people...
Well, Steve's been a plumber for a long time, too, I mean, that's...
Friday, we had homeless people...
My attorney degree is as good as this plumbing degree right now, I just wanna tell you.
Well, Jeff, we've also had homeless people in their Friday taking baths in the sink, putting water on the floor, too.
That's different than the floor being flooded, that's a whole lot different.
I mean, with all due respect here, I understand Greg is shorthanded, but I called Greg twice Monday morning. My call did not get returned. I'd like to know why.
My call, Judy, when you called the first time, I answered, okay? I talked to you, 'cause you said Patrick called you and the floor was wet. I said, "Yes, Judy, we were aware of that. We cleaned the water up, okay?"
No, let's back up, it's not okay. So, when I called Greg the first time, I was almost at work when Patrick called me. Patrick said the floor was wet, so I called Greg, "Are you aware?", he said, "I'm aware, we've cleaned up the water." Five minutes later, I walked in the door, the floor, not just wet, that sounds like, "Oh, we've got a little spill here, flooded." So I called Greg to get an assessment, where is this water coming from? I had an idea, because we had an issue with the valve before. Then we looked at it, no, it's coming from the hot water valve, it's also coming from the echo, which is connected to the cold water valve. So I called Greg again, so initially, I talked to Greg, but I wasn't at work. The first, the first call when I got to work was not returned. The second call when I got to work was not returned. Jared showed up, he had an appointment, and he showed up, and he helped. By then I had called Doug, because he is familiar with plumbing, because I needed to figure out what's going on here. And when we turned on that hot water valve, it just flooded, it spewed everywhere. So, I had the echo technician there, Jared came in, and my husband was there, because I needed to get an assessment. Uh, and yes, Jared, thank you, you did, he was, he worked all day.
So when I came in, I came in at five, a little bit before five, 'cause I had a doctor's appointment yesterday morning. And I wanted to get here and make sure the building was cleaned before I had to leave. When I opened the door, I usually come in, I shut the alarm off, I open all the doors, I turn all the lights on in the building, so I have free range when I'm moving and cleaning. When I opened Judy's office, there was water on the floor. I immediately went to the kitchen, 'cause that's where I heard it coming from. My assessment was it was coming from the echo machine, from the back of the echo machine. So I immediately shut the water valve off on the cold side, and the water had slowed. I, what I didn't know was there was two more valves that had been piped in before the shut-off valve. So I shut those off. And the issue with the hot water side valve was there's a calcium deposit, or something in the valve as you shut it off. It bypasses the O-ring and shoots water out on the first quarter turn or the last quarter turn, which is generally, it's normal for those valves when they get something in the seat, or if the O-ring is starting to go bad. So, after talking to Greg, after I got back, we made an appointment with Summit to come in this morning and replace both of those valves. So they're both brand-new valves. The Summit guy came in at six o'clock this morning, we shut down the system, we drained the system, we changed both valves, we refilled the system, let all the air out of the lines up on the fourth floor, turned the pumps back on, turned the water, hot water heater back on, and everything should be up to par. There may be a few air pockets in the system that will eventually come out on the fourth floor when they're using the sinks up there. But otherwise, there shouldn't be any more issues with any of the sink.
Yeah, we gotta keep moving ahead, because we've gotta be out of public works thing at eleven-thirty, so we've got, we haven't gotten through...
Thank you, Darren.
The path of our journey yet.
I mean, we still gotta take care of business.
Well, I know, and it's, it's, it's same care, but we'll, yeah, we need to talk.
So it sounds like the valves have been replaced, and we'll just wait and see how the carpet turns out, is that what I'm hearing?
And on weekends, yeah, it's, 'cause we've got one of you on a weekend, so, kind of future, when we have anything on a weekend, you need, one of you needs to be out there.
Do you guys have more of the carpet squares, the extras?
No.
Or we have to order more?
I mean, we, I think we have a couple boxes of them, just for single replacement, for the different colors that we have, but it's not more than two or three boxes.
Okay.
But if there's a little water, you just, it's okay, just clean it up?
No, no.
I mean, I heard that anything's gonna check.
That's what I said, well, we have, we have somebody on call on the weekend.
You just said we're gonna talk about it, what are we gonna talk about?
We're gonna, we're gonna, yeah, we're...
As long as we get a call, we'll be at jail.
Yes.
I'm just, it, it's frustrating, 'cause we have a lot of people that have issues with it, and I know you're shorthanded, and a lot of times it's about attitude. And so, even with this morning, we were trying to talk about it, and on the even keel, and it got a little heated. And so, attitude can change a lot of things. So that's what I'm, I'm saying, is you're, you're saying, "Well, we'll come in and clean it up." I'm not asking for, I'm coming here and making sure that the crap's not gonna hit the fan Monday morning when everybody gets here, we got a flood.
Are keeping office holder in the loop when it's their office, because I may not mechanically be inclined, but I know people who are, and I would've investigated where this was coming from and not just let it run.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Signing of quotes from NAPID and Henderson for public works equipment for three trucks.
So, we got three cabinets that we purchased in this year's budget, with the budget. We also added in all the equipment that goes on this truck and that truck for a total package, so everything's in our budget. Um, and they're a little bit different each truck, so, um, the first quote is with NAPID, and it's, it's worth a four at five fifty. And it's a new plow, spreader, dump bed, and every other equipment that goes with it. So, that quote is fifty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. I can go through all of them, through all I want, if you like. The next truck is a single axle international, and there's NAPID, there's Henderson, and then another one from Henderson. So it's the PTO, a hydraulic tank with NAPID, and then the spreader and a plow with Henderson. And then the last truck is another, that, that first single axle truck, that will be, um, for the sign, sign shop. And we will build the bed for that, it'll be a flatbed on the single axle. The, the, the F-five fifty is a dump bed on that truck. And then this last single axle truck, it'll be swapping up a bed and all the equipment from another truck over, and it's just the PTO and that one's with NAPID. So I just need approval of these quotes and signing, and we'll get things ordered. Several weeks, we'll be all getting some wish work.
I'm good with them, I can't find my email, I can't hit on the F-drive, so... Email is...
I just print them off, so...
Yeah, and I either hit it or deleted it or something, 'cause it's usually attached to our documents, so...
I, I'm fine with all this. Eric, I, I'll just be curious as to how you, if you had to guess right or die, so this is important, right? The fact that the maintenance, or the, your folks are gonna do all of this, what's that worth?
Every truck's different, depending on what we're dealing with.
Right.
Um, even the truck that we're outfitting everything brand-new, we're still installing ourselves.
Right.
That might be saving about ten thousand. That, trucks that were actually swapping that over, Steve, we've gone to buying stainless steel beds, and so we can recycle those, at least for one interval, maybe two, just depends, that's substantial, you know, maybe fifty thousand or so, right there.
I mean, it's...
It's a savings by us doing this ourselves.
Oh, yes it is, and, and we, we don't capture that at all here. That central maintenance ought to get at least some recog, I don't know, recognition, or we should recognize it ourselves, that if you told NAPID, "Do it all, not just the material, but also the labor to do it", it would go up by thousands and thousands of dollars.
We did that with, we kind of priced a Ford F-five fifty, one of these recent ones we did, and we built the bed ourselves. And I think Tyler added about fifteen thousand that we saved by doing that. Uh, by building the better, at that time, it was hard to get a stainless steel flatbed for a Ford F-five fifty, a smaller truck. So sometimes it's a little bit about getting what you want, and by building the bed, we can build it exactly how we want it. So it's a little bit of that, too, but it's definitely savings. It's hard to capture the exact amount, but...
Right.
Um, having a crew that's as versatile and talented as they are, definitely is an advantage for us, so...
I think it definitely goes to justifying the maintenance building, and that's kind of where you're...
Right.
So, yeah, I got this from Sam, he's, he's the paper guy, so... Should've known he had it on him, so... All right, I'll make a motion to approve and sign the quotes from NAPID and Henderson for public works equipment for the three trucks as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Eleven-thirty, right?
Yeah, eleven-thirty.
Okay. Uh, signing of DSSF grant application. All right, let's just share.
These are easy, so I don't ask questions.
Yeah, these are, yeah, if y'all don't ask any questions, we're going real fast.
Uh, the DSSF grant is a grant that was, we used to use in the past, they've raised the top ends, and we, we can actually apply for it again. It'll be a two thousand dollar pay raise for forty-four of my staff members. There's no money out of our pocket, this all comes from the Deputy Sheriff's Supplemental Salary Fund.
So this is a, uh, application for the grant, correct, Sheriff?
That is correct.
And if we obtain the grant, the, the county receives eighty-eight thousand dollars, turns around and sends two thousand dollars to forty-four people that work for you. And these are post-certified?
All post-certified.
Got it.
And full-time.
Got it. Okay, I'll make a motion to sign the application for the, uh... DSSF grant application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. State Drug Task Force DTF Grant Application.
So this is the twenty-four JAG Mustang Drug Task Force application for a grant. We're asking for two hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars in some odd sense, I won't get into that, because here I don't like this thing. Uh, there's several different pieces of equipment that we're gonna be purchasing if get approved. Uh, this will be ran through the Cole County Sheriff's Department, but this equipment will be for everybody that's participating in Mustang. There's seven different agencies.
So that's the twenty-four.
Yeah.
Just operate behind one ear?
I have no idea. I don't, I do good, you spoke to John, I couldn't...
Sorry for the questions. It says twenty-four, I'm looking at it, so, all right, you get it.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to sign the State Drug Task Force Grant Application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Renewal to a vehicle equipment install and repair services for... Renewal to a vehicle equipment install and repair services for the sheriff.
This is a second renewal with Wireless USA and Turnkey Mobile. We put this as a multi-fit award in 2023. They both have agreed to keep their prices the same, and the Sheriff's Department has been pleased with their service, services. Our recommendation is to renew with both of them. And I do have two contracts for some.
Make a motion to renew the contract for vehicle equipment install and repairs with Wireless USA and renewal for the equipment install and repair services with Turnkey Mobile.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Renewal to a telephone and video visitation services for the sheriff.
This is the second renewal with HomeWave for the telephone and video visitation services. The rates have stayed the same, and the Sheriff's Department pleased with their services. Our recommendation is to renew for another year.
Have we discussed, at one time or another, the, the cost to the inmate?
So there was, there was an SEC ruling just recently that lowered, it's going to mandate the lowering of the, of the amount of money. The state actually passed one this, this go-around for twelve cents a minute, which we were about there, anyway. So as far as what the FCC ruling is, there's been a change of leadership with the United States. So I think that that's going to be changed somewhat, so we're still waiting to hear about that. So the National Sheriff's Association has approached President Trump and the new FCC director to try to get that changed a little bit. The problem is, is when you pay that per minute, what it does is it pays for the equipment, so that the county, the sheriffs aren't, don't have to put that out. If they lower it that much, then vendors will start pulling out, and then we'll have to pay for all that equipment, so.
All right, I'll make a motion to renew telephone video visitation services with HomeWave.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Okay, new business, accounts payable review.
Yes, I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review. We just have about four, five of them.
Mark and I have discussed that, so I'll make a motion to pay accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, second and final reading of Budget Adjustment Number Three.
This is for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. This is the grant that was awarded to the Juvenile Department, the Springer Family Center. And so I do need action in order to change the budget today.
Make a motion to sign the corridor for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for the grant for the Juvenile Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any unfinished business?
I'm done starring.
I'm sorry?
So I'm done starring, I'm ready for a rodeo.
I would entertain any motion to go into close session.
Can I just add something real quick to the board? So this week is, not to steal any thunder from Public Works, but it is EMS week as well this week. So just a great thank you to all of our folks, and they've accomplished a lot of great things over the last year. We are having a get-together Thursday night from five to nine. If any of you would like to attend, there are extra tickets. And you may see some mutual aid ambulances here helping us out. We, we've provided coverage over the weekend for other districts to have their events, so they're going to help us out Thursday night as well. So if you'd like more info, just let me know.
Thank you. Pursuant to Section 610.021 of Revised Statutes of Missouri, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following: security under Section 610.021 Subsection 20 and 621.021 Subsection 22.
Roll call, please.
Sam?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.